Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to the Monday, September 17th meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
President.
Trustee Luise.
President.
Trustee Andino.
President.
Trustee Lang.
President.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight, and tonight I have two appointments to make. The first is the appointment of Laura Raffiani to the sign and owning review board with a term to expire on April 1, 2021. Mrs. Raffiani reached out to me to serve on this board, and I was thrilled when she did that. She's currently the chairperson of the Eastchester Architectural Review and Sign Committee, so her knowledge and expertise should serve us well. And actually, I just want to verify, Gary, she can serve in both municipalities?
She's helping Eastchester.
Okay.
You want to see good or bad?
She is the chairperson of the board, the sign, Architectural Review and Sign Committee for the town of Eastchester. So, okay, good. And she's a Tuckahoe resident now. So do I have a motion on this appointment?
Mayor, if you don't mind, I know it's out of order. I'd like to comment while you're talking.
Can I? Well, actually, I'll let you after I finish my business. Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I will allow Ms. Caliano, under our discussion period, to go ahead and say comments. This won't be a debate, but I'll certainly listen to anything outside.
Do you understand? Oops, that it's only comments. Thank you. To the point of the nomination that's before you, Laura Raffiani, for the sign and owning board. When I was planning board commissioner, I made an effort to stay in my lane, and I avoided making public comment on non-planning board topics. That is not the case anymore, as you voted me off the planning board this past April 2018. Now I'm free to comment as I see fit. I'd like to make some points about your nomination of Laura Raffiani for a position on the three-member sign and owning board. I don't personally know Laura, but I believe we were introduced to each other a while back. And some of our villagers may think the sign and owning board is not important, but I'd like you to consider the following points. To my knowledge, and apparently we have already gone over that, Laura is not a resident of our village. She's a resident of Eastchester.
That's incorrect. She's a resident of Tuckahoe.
Where does she live in Tuckahoe?
She lives on Main Street.
That's her business address.
That's her residence address.
It would seem to most villagers that our boards ought to be composed of villagers from Tuckahoe. After all, our villagers have the most invested in our village. Does Eastchester or Bronxville seek out residents of neighboring areas to fill their boards? No, they do not. You ought to follow the established custom of selecting only Tuckahoe villagers. My next point.
Well, I'm gonna address, I just have to address that point, because you're factually wrong on that. She resides on Main Street, right up the street here. That is her residence, her and her husband.
That's her residence address. She resides on Claudette Way in Eastchester.
They, no, I'm sorry, you're wrong. She resides on Main Street with her family.
Oh, they sold the Claudette Way home?
She resides on Main Street in the village of Tuckahoe. You cannot serve on the sign and owning board for the village of Tuckahoe if you live in Connecticut, Eastchester, or Bronxville. She resides in the village of Tuckahoe, and she is, there's a motion for her appointment to this board.
I have additional comments to make. To my knowledge, Laura is the spouse of one of Tuckahoe's most prolific developers, Philip Raffiani. As you all know, Phil has developed as much as 50% of our Main Street through his companies Dorami, Midora, and Marado. Laura may not be a member of Phil's companies, but it cannot be said that she will not see a benefit if one of Phil's buildings comes before the sign and owning board. As it happens, Phil is also a regular applicant for tax surcherries from our village. The last one was approved about a year ago for about $100,000. That may all be legal and appropriate for Phil to do, but it certainly raises the appearance of impropriety if Phil's spouse, I still argue a non-resident, but arguably perhaps a business resident on Main Street, is permitted to serve on one of our village boards, a board that could easily see an application from one of the buildings that Phil owns on Main Street. Then what do you do? Will Laura recuse herself from a three-member board? She certainly ought to. Being a property owner is not the same as being a resident. You may recall that David Cologne owned the barber shop on Cameron Place and was installed on the planning board. He didn't live in Tuckahoe. When it was discovered that he used his business address to enroll his children in Tuckahoe schools, there was an outcry, and his children were asked to leave. David subsequently disappeared from the planning board. While Laura is no David, David's use of a business address in place of actual residency is a precedent that your board should avoid. Next, appearance of impropriety means even if it only looks questionable, such an action should be avoided. Toward that end, has the nomination of Laura Raffiani been reviewed by the village ethics board? What did the village ethics board recommend? More to the point, who is on the village ethics board? I know we had one several years ago when I last reviewed the village board minutes, but I haven't seen any recent appointments to our ethics board. Who are they and what have they recommended about this nomination? In light of my comments, I believe this board should reconsider the nomination of Laura Raffiani to the sign and owning board and seek a nominee who resides in our village. I'd like to continue on with your next nominee, Christopher Garrity.
Uh, no, I'm sorry. No, thank you. I'm gonna finish up on this item number one, so I have a motion, I have a second.
I'd like to preserve the opportunity to speak about Christopher Garrity when his name comes up.
And I'll ask for any discussion amongst the board members?
I inquired about Laura's residency also, and was informed that she in fact does live in Tuckahoe. If that's not accurate, then, and it comes to our attention, then we could address it, you know, at that point.
And my understanding would be, I think Gary can tell us that she will have to assign the oath book, and so she's taking an oath that one of the
That she lives here.
Elements of that is that she's a resident, right?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. And to Mel's point about if she's, if there's an application before the board about a sign on her husband's building, or she would have
She would have to recuse herself.
Absolutely.
I would imagine.
And that'd be my advice, and we'll let her know that.
And also, I just want to add to Ms. Caliani's point, we, the board is currently working on updating the code of ethics and disclosure forms, so that's something that we're actively working on to make sure that the current, this board and other boards or any other committees have people who are committing to upholding the code of ethics.
Roll call?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And next is appointment number two, which is the appointment of Christopher Garrity to the zoning board of appeals to fill the unexpired term of Danny Lang through the period of April 1, 2021. Chris also reached out to me for this board. Chris is an attorney. He is a lifelong resident of Eastchester and now Tuckahoe. He's just recently purchased a unit in the Gentry Building. He attended Immaculate Conception School, Tuckahoe Middle and High School. He then went on to SUNY Cortland and Thomas Jefferson School of Law in San Diego. We have a ad hoc member on the zoning board, and normally, or historically, an ad hoc member is next in line to get an appointment for a full-time position on the board that they happen to serve on. That's not a rule, but it's, that's historically what's happened. In conversation with our village attorney and my experience on the zoning board and just all the years that we've had our zoning board since I've been on it, we've always had an attorney on the board, and it's only recently that we have not. So I feel very, very strongly that there should always be an attorney who sits on the zoning board of appeals, and I was glad that Chris stepped up. So do I have a motion on this appointment? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion amongst our board members? Any discussion from our board members?
I just have a question, Mayor. The fact that he's an attorney, does it, does it, does he specialize in zoning, or does it matter?
No, he doesn't. He's not a land use attorney. That would be a perfect world. That would definitely have, would have been my preference. But I always felt, even when I served on the board, we had, our chairperson was Wayne Simmons, and he was an attorney, I think he was a financial attorney. It just, having an attorney on the board just kind of keeps everyone, it, first of all, helps Gary tremendously, I know that. And it just kind of assists the board in coming to terms with some aspects of the applications that they're fielding, because zoning is much more of a legal matter as compared to planning, which is much more of a subjective matter for the applications that they have. So with that, I'll take a roll call.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. We have, I'll tell you what, when we have the first opportunity, which is coming right up, you can speak on that, because it was on our agenda. We have no presentations or public hearings tonight, and that's gonna bring us to the adoption of minutes and the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of July 16, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that now is gonna bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on any item that is in our agenda, so Ms. Caliano, you're more than welcome to come in.
Thank you. Mayor Melvin Caliano, Westview Avenue. I wanted to offer comment prior to your vote on Christopher Garrity. He will soon be a neighbor of mine. A review of his law firm biography suggests limited, if any, experience with the concept of zoning. His biography does, however, emphasize that he is a Republican Party stalwart. In our increasingly diverse Tuckahoe community, surely there are volunteers who would be glad to serve our village other than Mr. Garrity. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Yes, sir.
Yes, Albert Stern, Westview Avenue, Tuckahoe. I've received your, I've reviewed your agenda resolutions and see that the board is proposing giving $125,000 in the form of a tax rebate to a property owner who claims he's been overpaying his property taxes. Bill Weinberg, the developer of the Marriott Hotel, under resolution number seven, is asking for another handout from the taxpayers. This time, after receiving a $5 million cleanup from the state, a $1.4 million tax break from the county, and about $250,000 paid by this village to defeat a much-needed environmental study. Now he needs another $125,000. This is an egregious handout to another big developer. This has happened far too often here. I didn't under, do not understand how your tax negotiator has permitted this to happen. He needs to explain his thinking to all of us. It'd be really good if he came down to explain himself. I understand that the cost of this, that the appraisal of this parcel where the hotel now stands was in 2011 about 1.2 million, and despite everything that's been done, including the renovation, the remutation, I'm sorry, the cleanup of the toxic property, it is now going down to $200,000, $200,000 in value. It's lost almost a million dollars, according to this attorney. Since 2011, when you first became mayor, more than $2 million has been given back in the terms, in the form of tax certs. A sizable portion of which has been given to developers and to large corporate organizations. You explain, you have explained these rebates by saying these are bad breaks, and you do not know why our tax certs are so much higher than in neighboring areas such as Eastchester and Bronxville. You have further claimed that it is not your fault, but it's the fault of the county or the town of Eastchester for not doing an up-to-date revaluation and appraisal for all the properties here. This seems to be a very hollow excuse. You have told us that an updated revaluation could cost upwards of $2 million. How do we even know if your numbers are correct?
Ask Mary Mar.
Will you, please let me finish. Will you produce the estimates you have relied upon? Put them on your website for everyone to see. But let's say your numbers are correct, then we will look at these numbers. We have spent over $2 million, as I said, since you've been mayor, on these surcherries, and the reappraisal would have cost just that amount, $2 million. So let's look at it another way. As a businessman, the answer is obvious. Why have you not financed this $2 million at 5% or $100,000 per year? You have no problems with adding debt, because the debt has increased almost four times since you've been mayor. Since the rebates have averaged over $300,000 per year since 2011, the village would be ahead by $200,000 if you had financed the search, the appraisal, so you would no longer have these kind of surcherries hitting us year after year after year. You would have done the proper thing and opted for the revaluation. But let's focus on resolution number seven, having to do with Mr. Weinberg. According to the resolution, Mr. Weinberg is getting $125,000 for overpayment of his taxes due to the demunition of his land values, or that he was initially assessed improperly. Really? You mean the land values went from over $1 million to $200,000 with a hotel on top of it now? Maybe when the property was a toxic dump with hardly a thought of a hotel, it might have been over-assessed a bit, just maybe. But since 2011, the exact opposite has occurred. Since 2011, the land is appreciated tremendously, and higher taxes should have been paid. First, the trustees changed the land use, permitting the hotel to be located on the property. Then the zoning board gave free rein to build an extra fifth floor. Then the planning board let Weinberg get away without even a proper environmental study. Then the state spent millions cleaning up his property. So each step here made his property more valuable, not less, as this rebate implies. Now he has a big oversized hotel going up on his property, and this guy wants even more money from us? So why in the world does this developer deserve even more of our tax money? This indeed is an egregious hit to the taxpayer who have submitted to big increases since you became mayor, much higher than our neighbors. Incidentally, this past year's report on our village's financial condition included an important qualifier which you failed to mention on the village's website. It said additional upgrades would be dependent on reducing our tax surcherries. So far this year, we've had $200,000, if you include this month, in four months, so we're doing pretty well. We'll go over $300,000 this year again. Your board should be looking after the taxpayers, who are now paying by far the highest tax rates in the area. These taxes are going up at twice the rate of Bronxville and Eastchester. Your board should stop giving our money to these fat cat developers like Bill Weinberg. Your board needs to initiate a comprehensive property revaluation, so your developer friends will no longer take our money. For the good of Tuckahoe, I am asking the trustees to vote no to resolution seven. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to, yes, sir?
Do you have any comments?
No, this is your chance to comment. Now we have somebody else.
You don't have any comments, right?
This is your chance. I'll certainly address this when
Thank you very much.
When we're at resolution number seven.
Thank you. Mike Dardano, 62 Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. This is regarding the same thing that Bert was talking about. I don't understand or know how exactly all this transpires, it's not my expertise, but we do have a client that is a land use tax attorney, and so I asked him a question. I go, how does this process work? And he said to me that it usually goes to a board in a town or a village, and then if there's a problem, it would go to a court, and then a court would do an edict, I guess, say, here's what the ruling is. So I have a question and then a statement. A question is, had this, has this gone to court, or is this something you've decided on? One question. Second is, is that, given the history we've had with Mr. Weinberg, plus some of the points that Bert brought about the value of the land, it's just extremely difficult for someone like me to be thrilled that he's getting this tax break. On a personal level, because of all the time it's meant, and I'm not gonna get into the court and all that crap with the suit and all that, I'm just saying, it's just, and there may be a logical reason, but it just is difficult for me to accept it, and I'm kind of channeling Joe Marinello here, God rest his soul, because I know that he would be up here right now if he saw this, but I'm doing it a different way than he would. So those are my, those are my issues.
Thank you. Actually, I'll, I'll address the general question that you have. There's two tax certs on this agenda tonight. One is for a tax surchiary that is, as you mentioned, for the Ardmore Realty, which is the property where the hotel is being built for $125,000. There's another one for almost $91,000 for the Gentry Building, which I know is where Mr. Stern lives. He didn't bring that one up. So we're just gonna talk about tax certs in general and how we process these. A tax surchiary, an applicant decides, or he feels, that his property has been overly assessed, that he's been paying too much in property taxes, so he hires a law firm who contacts the village's law firm. So I think that answers the first part of your question. What are the steps in the process? And I'm gonna have Gary correct all my inaccuracies, if I am making any throughout this. So we have a law firm, Aldo, and Mr. Stern asked if we would have our tax cert attorney come down here, and I think it's a good suggestion. So I think, Omar and I spoke about that earlier today. You know what? He's been before the board. We hired this firm to go ahead and aggressively fight these tax surchiary claims, these challenges. We had a firm who represented the village for many years, John Burkhart. John did a wonderful job. He retired. I know that Aldo is also the tax cert counsel, I think for the school or the town, is it?
I believe the town.
For the town of Eastchester. So one thing that, it, I have to tell you that it gets under my skin that we have to, I as a taxpayer, also have to contribute towards this tax surchiary claim for that property, or for any of these large ones. We've had, as I was mentioning earlier tonight, we've had some that were $400,000, just, you know, outlandish. So the process is that we will have our tax cert counsel go ahead and basically negotiate with the attorney for the applicant. They'll go back and forth, and they will negotiate and hammer out a settlement. They will bring that settlement to, first of all, they, the applicant has to agree to it. So the, in this case, the applicant has agreed, saying, he, I'm sure he asked for well more than $125,000. I have no idea where they started. I'm sure they started at double that. So he has agreed to accept $125,000, which again, as I say, it kind of rubs my grain the wrong way, but our tax cert attorney has told us that this is the best negotiation that he can get. And more importantly, the school district, which must be certainly double, if not, I can't imagine how many more times this, the school district has also agreed to the same valuation settlement with the applicant. So we have two choices here. We can, when these surchiary settlements have been negotiated by our tax surchiary attorney, we can decide to agree with that negotiated settlement that he has, approve it, and then it goes before the court, once it's stamped, I think we have 60 days, we have to actually write the check. If the board decides, you know what, nah, we just, we hate the guy, we're not gonna go ahead and give him anything, then it goes to court. Most likely, and I can't speak for the court, but most likely, the judge is gonna say, well, let's see, the attorneys already banged out the deal, and they had $125,000 settlement, but for whatever reason, the board of trustees just maybe didn't like the applicant, and they denied him that settlement. The court is gonna go ahead and grant them certainly a higher figure, I would assume, than $125,000, but on top of that, the village taxpayers are gonna have to pay the legal fees for all that. So, legal fees of both parties, by the way. So we've, we've kind of gone over this many times in the past, and I'm glad I have the opportunity to speak to it again. So here tonight, we have, like I said, $91,000 for the Gentry Building, we have $125,000 for this, and they're never gonna end. You know, there's always gonna be tax surchiary claims in a municipality unless you have done a 100% revale in your municipality. Scarsdale's done it, Bronxville's done it. It does cost $2 million upfront to go ahead and get it done. There is a maintenance cost every couple of years of $100,000 or $200,000, depending on the quantity of residents that you have, businesses. I've always made the case that it's kind of challenging when you, when you have a municipality like Tuckahoe, where the Tuckahoe tax bill is really the smallest tax bill that I get in my household. The biggest one, of course, is the school tax bill. Now, I happen to live in the Eastchester School Tax District. If I lived in the Tuckahoe taxing district, my bill might be, let's say, let's say it's similar to what the Eastchester one is. But the reality is, the village of Tuckahoe can go ahead and reassess, do a revale of all our properties, and that'll certainly cure the tax bills that are coming from the clerk's office here, but that's not gonna cure the tax bills that are coming from the town of Eastchester, which is your school tax bill, your county tax bill, and that is 75% of your tax burden. So the, the true reality is that if the town of Eastchester, first of all, as I said before, and I brought this up to County Executive Latimer at a meeting last month, if the county of Westchester, and there's light conversation about this, if they did a revale, perfect. That's really where it should start. But if the county is not gonna do it because it's political suicide, or just so terribly expensive, then if the town of Eastchester did it, the village of Tuckahoe would certainly adopt, I'm certain we would contribute towards that cost, and we would adopt the town of Eastchester's full assessment valuation once they had completed that. So anyway, that's, I'll get off my soapbox a little bit, but that is the process, so I think to answer your question was, should, I guess, oh, another point you made is, should the property be devalued, since it seems that it has increased in value? Well, the reality is, that property has no greater value today than it did before they started building the hotel. Just because there happens to be this large building on the property, that has not increased the value. That property, that property value only increases when he's issued a CO from the building department, which will be some point next year. So the assessor does not view that property as improved yet, because all it is is just a bunch of lumber on a piece of property that hasn't been fixed yet. So anyway, Gary, I'm gonna throw it to you.
No, Mr. Mayor, I think you said it perfectly, but I do wanna commend the board for hiring Mr. Bategliano, because I practiced here for 27 years in the county. You learn who the players are in the county, what they do, who specializes in what, and he does have a great reputation, so, and that's, that's, that's real important for this board, and it was, the important vote for the board was when you hired this firm to handle these for you, because they have a great reputation, they know what they're doing, and, you know, I wasn't privy to these negotiations on this project, but again, I have complete confidence in the attorney that you've hired to handle this.
And we'll, we'll reach out to him, see if we can get him maybe to come to a meeting in the future. I think, you know, maybe he can explain these interbattles that he's having.
Sure, and it's not, it's not a, you know, a one-phone-call-type thing. I'm sure this is months and months
Oh, of course, yes.
... negotiations with, you know, other professionals, appraisers, their appraisers, so this is a back and forth
Right.
... for quite some time. That's how this process goes.
Hold on. I'd like to just add one comment to what Gary said. You, what this board is trusting in, you know, there was some invective by Mr. Stern that because this is a developer, that they, that the board is treating him in any different way as somebody else. And the truth of the matter is, what we have done is we've appointed counsel in whom we trust to be making these determinations, to be engaging in these negotiations on behalf of the board. And we look at this blindly. We don't look at somebody who may or may not be a developer, as opposed to somebody who's a residential, you know, homeowner. To suggest that we are treating somebody differently is really, I think, impor- I think, improper. We're looking at this in terms of what the law provides and what's best for our taxpayers.
Well, I just find it very interesting that this began in 2011, the hotel's going up in 2018, 2019, and the certiary stopped in 2018. Why didn't it go to 2019, or 2020, when it was making money? That would reverse all this, wouldn't it? But your legal team, or whoever they were that negotiated, said, hey, stop it before the hotel's built. So therefore.
You can't negotiate a tax cert for.
We can say the land is losing money.
Somebody please straighten this.
Albert.
We could lose over a million dollars on it, because the hotel hasn't yet been built.
We can't?
Okay. And the problem is that you say many things that really require correction. And, and so we, we need to take the time to digest some of the inaccuracies that you often make. And we, we, we do, it's important that they are, you know, it's important that you speak, but it's also important that we respond. But I think, you know, what that requires is actually looking at the numbers that you, you kind of spout out in a way that I think is hard to follow.
I'm glad you made it tonight.
No, let me finish.
At least we could talk tonight.
True. That's a good point. That's a good point. Good. Well, it's good to see you too, Mr. Stern. But we do, we do need actually to, to digest some of what you say so that we can respond properly.
And I think what David's going to say right now is, you can't actually litigate, and that's basically what, or, or debate a tax cert for a year, either next year or 20 years.
Yeah. So what will happen is, I understand that this hotel is being built right now. So the future assessment, the 2019 assessment, obviously is not done yet. So Todd Hunn, the assessor in Eastchester, is also our assessor. What he'll do towards the end of this year, early next year, is he'll put a value on the property. He'll look how, how far the hotel's been built, when is it going to be open. He'll, he'll try to put an evaluation going, the doors are going to be open on June 1st, or July 1st, or next year, whatever it is, and he'll put some sort of value on that. So you will see the assessment go up in 2019. There's no doubt about that. And it'll probably go up to full assessment in 2020, when it's completely open for a full, full calendar year. So obviously, you can't cert future assessments, because you haven't got that assessment.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And for the record, Gary, and, and David, this certiarity is settled. He cannot file for another one for how long? Is that five years?
Well, you know, to be honest with you.
Because if this is up in.
This valuation here becomes completely, almost, in my view, meaningless next year, when there's a hotel sitting on the property. You're not, it's, you're talking about vacant land now. What's the vacant land worth in 2011, 2018? It's not a discussion next year. Discussion next year is, what's this hotel worth? And that's, that's our assessor.
But is there a timeframe that he has to abide by before he can file another tax?
It settles it up to the present.
Every two years.
Then he can begin again.
But again, it's, it's moot. It's going to be moot next year.
Okay.
When this hotel.
And again, for the record, we are not giving out money. This board is not having these folks come in front of us, and they say, we want this, and we go, this has been explained as, as a agreement.
It's a refund of an overpayment.
It's a refund.
Between counsel. Okay, thank you.
Can I just say something? And Bert, I have agonized over this. I've spoken to almost everyone, either on the dais, or I've spoken to David and Gary about this, and people outside of here that are, that are objective parties, because I realize I'm not an expert in certiaries and assessments, and I'm not an attorney. And, you know, and looking at all of the facts, it, it, it really bothers me that, that this money has to be paid out. It doesn't bother me, bothers me more, you know, or as, as much as anyone else. I'm also just concerned that if we said, let's go ahead and reevaluate, that people like, you know, longtime homeowners and seniors are impacted. It's, you know, it's, it's so complicated, much more complicated than I even ever imagined. So.
You're right. And that's part of the reason why a lot of municipalities do struggle with a revow, because, you know, at the end of the day, from what I hear, you know, half the people, their taxes go up, half the people, their taxes go down.
So I just wonder, you know, to Bert's point, you know, if we continue to pay out these tax certiaries, is it worth at some point just saying, you know what, we're just going to keep on paying them? Maybe we do the reevaluation? I don't know. Just.
It's.
Since we, you know, how much, you know, we're going to wind up at $2 million anyway, so maybe to his point, we, we think about it. Not that we necessarily do it, but do we talk about that?
Okay, I'm going to move on to our resolutions tonight. We have resolution number one, which is authorizing a modification to the date of the approval of the community funds three-on-three basketball tournament from September 30th to October 14th at the Main Street Park from 1 to 5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Sorry.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the Eastchester-Tucco Chamber of Commerce to hold a Harvest Fest in Depot Square on October 20th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I just want to take a second to congratulate Karina and Juan. They're, they are our new chamber co-presidents. The first event they had, which, a couple of us were in the dunk tank this year, it was extremely successful. It was on July 21st. It was in Depot Square. So I'm sure that this event's going to be equally successful.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
As long as I don't have to go in the dunk tank, I'm in favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor, and he's going in the dunk tank.
It's going to be kind of cold for that.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution three, authorizing the appointment of Joseph Tavolola as general foreman, as outlined in the appointment letter dated September 11, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And we want to congratulate Joe, and again, best wishes to Jimmy Gizzo. Had that position for many years.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the appointment of Joe Marzella as heavy motor equipment operator, as outlined in the appointment letter dated September 11, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing the donation of a two-hour midweek birthday party at the Tucco Community Center to the Tucco seniors, so they can raffle it off at their annual bazaar on Saturday, October 13th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And resolution number six is authorizing a tax certiary settlement with Gentry Tenants Corporation for the assessment years 2012, 2016 through 18, with a street address of 21 Fairview Avenue, Section 27, Block 4, Lot 1, in the amount of $90,560. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
I'd have to abstain. I'm an owner at the Gentry, and because I would directly benefit from this certiary, I would like to abstain from it.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven is authorizing a tax certiary settlement with Ardmore Realty Company, Billwin Developments Affiliates LLC, for assessment years 2011 through 18, with a street address of 109 Marbledale Road, Section 35, Block 1, Lot 1A, and the amount of $125,319.3. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
Grudgingly in favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eight is authorizing sidewalk replacement work in and near the vicinity of Village Hall, in the amount of $48,002, and for work nearby the vicinity of Fisher Avenue Parking Lot, for the amount of $26,687.50, based on the awarded contract pricing by Palladino Concrete Creations, as awarded by the town of Eastchester's bid 2018 sidewalk and curb replacement, which was on June 19, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester and the village of Bronxville regarding emergency services notification to be provided by Swift Reach Networks Incorporated. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number 10 is authorizing an extension of a legal retainer agreement through May 31, 2020, with Chris Harold of Harold Salon, Strassfield, and Spielberg. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I believe he, he didn't raise his rate. Is that right? Didn't raise his rate? And we're getting our monies worth out of now, because we're meeting every two weeks negotiating.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 11 is authorizing the sale of the surplus Dodge Charger through Auctions International in the amount of $7,200 to the highest bidder, John Power of Memphis, New York. And I had to look that up. I didn't know there was a Memphis, New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution 12, authorizing the submission of an application to the Westchester Library System for a public library construction program grant for the upgrade to the library HVAC chiller system in the amount of $77,000, with the village contribution half of the said grant amount. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 13, authorizing the continuation of a financial advisory services agreement with Capital Market Advisors LLC through fiscal year ending 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 14 is authorizing First American Title to run deed searches on vacant property owned by the village located on Farragut Street and Pleasant Avenue, in the amount not to exceed $2,500. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 15, authorizing amendments and modifications to the fiscal year ending 2018 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And David, I know we, every year, we have to kind of make some adjustments on our budget. You move some from a surplus line to an under-expended line. So maybe, is there anything that jumps out? Any biggies?
Sure. Well, I mean, I'll provide some good news, actually. So the amendments, they are obviously, if, if we over expended one line, it needs to be made up in another line. Obviously, if you go through all the list, there's, you know, a couple hundred dollars here, you know, and you got to increase, decrease, very normal stuff. However, we've come to the conclusion that we believe at the end of fiscal year 2018, which wrapped up on May 31st, just a few months ago, and that includes the two tax certs that you guys passed this evening. So it is taking into account those large payments that it looks like over $270,000 will be put into fund balance. So it looks like at the fund balance, we'll increase from approximately 1.8 to 2.1 million dollars. So at the end of last fiscal year, we had a really good fiscal year, even with a lot of those large payments. It was, it was a good year for us.
So over $2 million in the savings account, basically?
Yeah, 2.1, yeah.
That's not bad. That's not bad at all.
It's very healthy.
That's, yeah, yeah. Come a long way, baby. Remember those old commercials? Now I'm dating myself, okay.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Very much in favor. Resolution number 16 is authorizing the transfer of $17,851.35 from the general fund to Project 2015-87 DPW Facility Upgrade and Closing of Said Capital Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I just want to, David, we went over what the capital projects was. Can you refresh my mind?
Sure. And again, this $17,000 to, to close this out came from last year's budget, even with that increase in, in fund balance. So it was a really good year. The original project estimate for some upgrades, the DPW facility, was about $90,000 that we had. Upgraded the heating and radiant system in the garages, fixed a portion of the foundation, some weatherproofing in the rear of the building. One of the big things is a, a new roof on the entire structure, and the salt shed. It's a very large salt shed, all for about $110,000. It was a significant amount of work that's done down there. Building looks good. For the value, I think we did a really good job.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 17 is approving vouchers in the amount of $1,109,213.24. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizzi.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. That's it on our resolutions. Anybody on the board have anything they want to discuss outside of their member reports?
David, could you talk a little bit about the newsletter? And what, what, you know, just that we're working on it and whatever.
Yeah, I, I hate to give too much information.
Oh, that's true.
When the residents.
You're right, you're right.
They're going to be very surprised.
You're right, you're right.
They are working on a newsletter. It is coming along. We have the history committee doing some work on it, and we're trying to get some other departments and some other, like the history committee and the seniors kind of involved in it, to have a little, have a little stake and little ownership in it. So hopefully August, October.
October.
Past August. I'm looking forward to the summer. Hopefully October, we'll have that out.
Good. All right, that's going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board. And we always start with Chief of Police, John Costanza.
Good evening, members of the board and mayor. Just a couple of things. I just want to touch on the IMA that you approved tonight with entering into agreement with Swift Reach, with our neighbors, is that it is a great tool for us in the village to get notifications to get notifications out to our residents. They can sign up for Swift nine-one-one emails and texts through our website. It's, again, it's a great tool for us to get messages out to the public quickly, whether it be crime prevention, active criminal activities, whether it could be traffic advisories or, you know, storm related information that is critical to our residents. Gives us an opportunity to get that information out quickly to everyone in one touch of the computer. So I encourage every single one of our residents, business owners, to sign up for that program. Again, it can be done right through our website. And then just, I just wanted to mention that Friday evening was the Police Benevolent Association's annual dinner. This year, the honoree was Sheila Marcot, our former trustee, our former town councilperson, a former county legislator. And I, I think it was a wonderful night for Sheila and her family. I want to congratulate her publicly. Regretfully, I could not attend, I had a family wedding to attend, but I know it was very well attended and it was a wonderful evening, I think, ad by all, and a great tribute to Sheila, who was not only a great friend and supporter of Tocco Police Department, but just so very heavily involved in our community. So congratulations to Sheila, to her family for sharing her all those years with us, and to the Benevolent Association for throwing a nice event. And just to recognize all the hard work that they do out throughout, throughout the year, all the good they do for our community, not only through their service to the police department, but involved in many programs in our village. Most recently, they packed backpacks for our schoolchildren with school supplies and handed them out all throughout the village. They, at Thanksgiving time, give turkeys to not only some needy families, but to many of the church groups in the community who then pay it forward and cook many of those turkeys and bring them to homeless shelters. Shiloh Baptist Church does that annually, so great partnerships that we have in our village and congratulations to the PBA and to Sheila and her family.
It was a great event, and it was a great location, too. I hadn't been there in many, many years, so excellent night.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. DeMarco. So Frank has something in his hand I asked him to bring tonight.
Thank God. I've got quite a few things to talk about, but I'll start slowly. But as everybody is well aware, you know, Jimmy Gizzo, who served our community as, in the Department of Public Works for well over thirty years, and his final years as general foreman in the Department of Public Works. I want to wish him health and happiness in his retirement. But Jimmy Gizzo, like Joe Tavallillo, were both born and raised in our village, and they're, they're deep rooted in the village of Tocco Ho. So they had special interests and a love and a passion for everything they've done here in Tocco Ho. But moving on to Joe Tavallillo, Joe is a very knowledgeable, handles himself very professionally, and as people are going to be well aware, he'll be a great asset to the village moving forward. So I wish Joe Tavallillo luck also. I have a list of items here, so just be patient with me. Bronx River Day, fall, on November fourth, between ten and one, and location will be Parkway Oval in Tocco Ho. We're going to have a Bronx River Cleanup Day. We had one a couple of months back, organized by Aaron Provenzano, which was very successful. I think we collected about three hundred and fifty pounds of plastics, and that's a lot of weight. Three hundred and fifty pound of plastics is a lot of weight, as some people are aware of. But we did, we collected three hundred and fifty pounds of garbage along our Tocco Ho Bronx River Waterway. So again, we're going to be doing that November fourth. The flyer will be posted on our local channel, and it'll also be as of tomorrow on our website. I'm moving forward, I'm looking for volunteers for our environmental committee. Within the next couple of months, we're going to be moving forward with some substantial and prominent initiatives that I would announce, I'm going to announce at our next meeting. For those that want to volunteer their time and service, please give me a call. You could call me at the DPW office, or you could send me an email. Contact information is on our local website. So for those that are interested, please feel free to ask me any questions you might have, or, you know, whether you're a professional or just simply a resident, I'll accept all of you, and I'll be glad to work with everybody. For those that don't know, aside, out of mind, but the pedestrian bridge, two Saturdays past, was removed. At three o'clock in the morning, they lifted it out of place, as me and David witnessed, standing there most of the night, and it was just so happy to see that bridge out of the way. But believe it or not, the reason I'm carrying this is this is the only thing that kept that bridge up from us removing it. This is a cable vision, Altice, which is their new name, fiber line that ran across the bridge, and believe it or not, this little cable fed the entire east side of Tocco Ho. So we're so happy that the bridge is down. They, they just Monday removed the stairs on the library side, and really, our work is done except for removing the metals and collecting the money for the scrap metal. We're going to be doing that this Saturday morning. Going on to Pocket Park, for those that are not aware of what Pocket Park is, in Crestwood, Tocco Ho, to the right side of the bagel loft, we created a little pedestrian park. The park is situated with benches, flowers, a serene area that those could rest, have a cup of coffee, read the paper, or just enjoy company of friends. We're almost done, we have two more benches on the Columbus Avenue side that need to be installed. We have some landscape lighting that will take place. We have an irrigation system that was, you know, it seemed to have taken forever to do that little park, but there's, there's a lot of utilities that were placed on the ground, electric irrigation system, drainage, lighting. We also refurbished an old street light that we found on Columbus Avenue. We've been working on that for the past year. We also installed that today, and that'll be lit up hopefully by the end of the week. But again, it's finally coming into fruition, I'm hoping everybody will enjoy it at some point. Leaf season. Do I really need to do my leaf spiel?
Yes, it's that time of year again.
I know, I know. We're going to start picking up leaves, October fifteenth. And those that are not aware, you know, most importantly, we need to make leaf season, leaf season safe. Piling leaves in the street, of course, is a necessity. I ask that neighbors work together to find a location where you could pile your leaves. We pick up leaves throughout the year, if you bag your leaves, you know, we'll pick them up, but during leaf season, we vacuum our leaves, which is important. And we basically do that every day, we don't have a routine, we start at one location from A to Z, and then we come back to A again. So there's no particular schedule or location per day, per week. We just follow a route and then we start all over again. But most importantly, keep in mind that our leaf truck could only pick up one side at a time. So we make, we go down one street, doing one side, and we have to turn around and go up the one way to do the other side. So we ask that, you know, if you see our leaf trucks around, please be cognizant that they are working on both sides of the street, we need to make it safe.
When does that start, leaf season, when do people?
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth, okay.
And it usually goes to December first, but we kind of run it a few more weeks after that, I try not to tell anybody that, just to make sure we got it all. But most importantly, I mean, you take a car, you know, every car's got a catalytic converter which gets red hot underneath each car. And what I ask you to do is please don't park on top of a pile of leaves, because it just creates a fire. Leaves, when they're standing and it's not raining, get very dry, and when they get very dry, they're able to spark a fire. So please be aware that we don't want anybody parking on, on a pile of leaves. Please keep the leaves, you know, between a sidewalk and a spot, not in the street. We want pedestrians, especially children, walking to school in the morning or walking home, we want them to have access to sidewalks, we don't want them walking in the streets. And that's really my spiel on, on leaf season. October thirteenth, we're going to have our second annual Get Acquainted With Your DPW Day, which is going to be Saturday, October thirteenth. We're going to have trolley rides for the kids, Truck and Equipment Expo, like we did last year, refreshments, mulching in place, place demo, and it's really answer any question that anybody might have about what we do. It was a success last year, and I think the adults enjoyed it more than the kids, you know, jumping into the vehicles, honking their horns and blowing their, their air whistles.
What time, what time Frank? What time?
It's going to be between ten and two, on October thirteenth, which is a Saturday. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Frank, appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Galuzzi, Johnny's going to talk to us about, there's going to be a couple of thousand new visitors to our great village this coming weekend.
Depot Square has seen quite a few people over the years. With our events this weekend coming up, Tocco Columbus Day Festival and Concert. Friday, the twenty-first, from five PM to ten PM. We have Italian talent, and throughout the day, again, from five to ten PM this Friday. Of course, food vendors in Depot Square. Continuing again on Saturday, the very next day, we have our, what's called our concert this year, our Columbus Day Concert in that weekend, that's the twenty-second, and that begins at twelve PM and ends at eleven PM in Depot Square. And that will feature freestyle, freestyle artists. Niobe Sapphire, Coro, and Lisa Lisa is our feature. If you remember Lisa Lisa in the Cult Gym, had quite a few hits back in the eighties. Also, earlier in the evening on both nights, remember, we celebrate Columbus Day, so we'll have a lot of Italian bands and talent that night. So you want to come out to Depot Square this weekend for an exciting Columbus Day Festival and Concert. This is all brought to us by the village of Tocco Ho, and the principal sponsor being the Generoso Pope Foundation. Producer A.J. Pope, thank you.
Thank you, Johnny, lots of food, lots of good entertainment, so we're looking forward to it. Now we just have to have good weather, that's for sure. Okay, Camille, anything? Nothing at all?
Thank you.
Okay, Gary?
I hope not to steal Deputy Mayor Giordano's thunder, but the planning board meeting is Wednesday this week, not Tuesday. It was originally scheduled for Tuesday, it was pushed to Wednesday at seven-thirty. The only thing on the agenda is a small yoga studio looking for a site plan approval above the old Chase Building down in Crestwood. I think there's a broker there now. But that's the only thing on the agenda. So it should be a quick meeting.
David, anything?
I wasn't going to speak about tax certs, but I think maybe what I want to bring up, and I want to kind of promote the village a little bit, is these aren't going away. We've increased our fund balance to over two million dollars while being extremely aggressive in the last three years with these. Tax cert attorneys on the opposite end don't have any incentive to, to negotiate and to settle these because they want multiple years, multiple years, and then they work on it, so they get, you know, a larger commission. But on our end, we've been very proactive in pushing these and pushing these and pushing these. And I got to say that we're at a point now where the Gentry and Ardmore were the last two big ones that we have hanging out there. That doesn't mean that we're not going to get any more, but we've been aggressive in the past, so it seems like we've got, not ahead of the curve, but we're, we're at the point where we can kind of maintain these and, and we're not going to see these types of large increases. However, tax certs happen every year, so it's just one of those things.
Yeah.
Nothing back from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten, things like that. So we're kind of at a point now where we're kind of caught up and trying to maintain them as best as possible. All while getting a fund balance of over two million dollars, so it's, you know, a testament to the village. Real quick, just talking about the hotel site, with the hotel, obviously, it's going up, it's moving a little bit. We received plans, construction plans, this summer in regards to the restaurant, those have yet to be approved. However, there's been a little bit of work out there on that site, they've been doing some borings to look for where the actual bedrock depth is. During that time, there's been the camp monitors in place and all the other environmental things they need to do. HDR was out there making sure they're doing everything completely safe, no exceedances at that point. We've been talking about P site and where this P site report is, and I keep asking Kevin Carper of the DC where it is, and I get always, I expect it very soon, I expect it very soon, and this came in today. They are waiting on one validation of a recent sample of this, what they call emerging contaminant sampling. Waiting for that to be validated, as we all know, it takes months upon months for anything to be validated. I don't know why it takes so long, I'm not the scientist at that point. However, at that point, he believes that the site characterization point will be finalized and DOC will make a final determination on the site. I've been saying this to the board since February, and we're saying it in, in September, whatever month we're in. We're still waiting on this report, and there's just a little bit more information for you, but we're all waiting for it.
And I have to believe, and so this is just my opinion, but reading between the lines, if there was any hazard, they wouldn't be pushing it, they wouldn't be kicking this can down.
And they don't release anything until it's validated, and they're not releasing anything to us, but obviously, we have a good report with DC, and Mike Musso, HDR's a good report, and they're, you know, they're not seeing anything to, you know, put off bells and whistles and things like that.
Right. Well, good, thank you for keeping on it, appreciate that. And yeah, just to dovetail on that, tax certs, as you know, and anyone who's listened to me for fifteen years, it's a pet peeve of mine, and I can tell you that, although I, I don't talk to Aldo, I haven't talked to Aldo too much, but I had a very good relationship with John Burkhard, he was our former tax cert counsel, and he would call me up, tell me where he was at in the negotiating point, and I'd be like, you know what? The heck with them, let's, you know, push it, you know, another six months, and we, you know, we really, you know, we, I think we have, Tocco has a reputation for pushing the envelope as far as we can. You know, and I, I would really, you know, really force them to kind of push it as extreme before they finally said, okay, we're just going to go to court, we're not going to negotiate, we're not going to deal with you anymore. So I have all the confidence that we're, we're doing as best as we can with it. It's, it's an unfortunate reality, but thank you. All right, so miscellaneous business, our next village board meeting is going to be on October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and that is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we will start with your and my Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. A few things in my report, first to dovetail on Gary's mentioning of the planning board meeting. The zoning board meeting has already occurred for the month of September, the plant, the next zoning board meeting will be on October tenth. The work session is at six-thirty PM, and then the, the meeting will be at seven-thirty PM, the agenda has not yet been posted. I wanted to, also, a few things that Frank has said that I would like to add to. Number one is that Pocket Park in, in Crestwood, that I, I had the pleasure of all summer walking down on my way to the station to watch as it was unfolding, and I can tell you that I saw the, the, Frank, your men, as well as some of your summer interns, there working hard to create something that I think is really, has come together quite beautifully and is well constructed, and I do think that our residents will really enjoy it. So, well done, it's incredible that I think our, we did such an, you know, put it together on our own as part of our, our talented crew that you have, Frank, so congratulations, I think it looks great, and I think it'll provide years of enjoyment to our community. Also, wanted to, to mention the, tonight, we went to a, some of us went to a golf outing that Danny had put together with Luigi Marcocchia for the VFW, the AC Jeffries, VFW Post twenty-seven sixty-eight, which was a very nice evening, and raised some funds for that, for the VFW Post, I think it was great, congratulations. At that event, Vito Pinto mentioned that the Eastchester VFW is having a fundraiser to benefit Hope for Warriors, which is a, a full cycle of care to restore the families and those who participate in, you know, nine, post-nine-eleven service members. And, and what that will be is on, let's see, Tuesday, November twentieth, if you purchase tickets through the VFW, they're eighty-five dollars each, there are funds that will go towards that organization, and, and it's for a show that's at the Westchester Broadway Dinner Theater called Beyond Glory, which is a one-man show, it stars Stephen Lang, and Stephen Lang is a pretty famous actor, you may remember him. He was the really bad guy in that movie Avatar. So it's a one-man show, and he plays several Men of Honor, who, who received the, the, they're all Medal of Honor recipients. So I think it could be a nice evening, goes towards a good cause, I would encourage you to sign up. You can reach out to Bob Foster at nine-one-four-two-six-three-zero-two-two-two for tickets. I also wanted to, another thing that Frank had mentioned, he spoke about, oh, sorry, before I do that, I also want to mention the Community Fund three-on-three basketball tournament, which is, we had mentioned in a resolution, but just to say a word about it, it'll be on Sunday, October fourteenth. It's a three-on-three basketball tournament for eighth and ninth graders, it'll be at the Tocco Ho Basketball Courts that have been newly refurnished and look terrific as part of the whole park improvement project, in part was sponsored by the Community Fund. The tournament is open for three or four players, and all of players must reside in or go to school in Bronxville, Eastchester, or Tocco Ho. Should be a great event, there'll be burgers, drinks, DJ, giveaways, referees, and some darn good basketball. So have your eighth and ninth graders sign up for the tournament, and we hope to see everyone there on the fourteenth. Finally, I wanted to, Frank had mentioned Jimmy Gizzo and Joe Tavallillo, who I congratulate, and, and I do want to acknowledge their deep roots in our village. I also would like to just mention another person who, who recently passed, Joe Marinello, who a lifeline, a long Tocco Ho resident, and certainly a passionate person who participated in our community, in our government, and in our dialogue, and it was a very decent man, so I just would like to take a moment of silence for Joe.
Let's go do that when we close it up tonight, for sure.
Okay, so let's do that, let's do it.
Yeah, when we close our meeting.
Thanks.
We'll recognize them, for sure.
No, that's all right, that's okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Trustee Luisci.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tuckahoe Seniors began a sixth-class art series on September 11th. And the students will be painting on various types of material, using different types of painting materials as well. It's a sixth-class art series, and I know it's filled to capacity, it's really doing well for the seniors down there. And then the week of September 25th is Active Aging Week. So it is a great opportunity for us, for your grandparents, your parents, anyone you know, your neighbor, to have them come down to the Tuckahoe Community, the Tuckahoe Senior Center located at Father Fata Hall Tuesdays and Thursdays. And the main event is coming up October 13th, and that is the Annual Bazaar, which is the Tuckahoe Seniors' biggest fundraiser of the year. So please, if you can, come out, show your support to the seniors. That again will be on Saturday, October 13th, at the Tuckahoe Community Center. And I believe that kicks off at 10:00 AM in the morning. So please, if you can, come on and help our seniors. And that's what I have.
Thank you.
Boy, October's a busy month.
Same day of DPW Day, no?
Yeah, it is. Okay, trustee, you know?
Okay, I'm going to keep it short. The library received a grant from the Community Fund for $9,180. So they're going to be offering free yoga classes, cooking classes, a science program for children and teens, and also a cooking class for teens, as well as adults. They have asked me to highlight that they're going to have cooking on October 29th with a local resident, Mara Percampieri. She's a local resident and is going to be making an Italian dish. So come out and support Monday 29th, October 29th at 6:30. I will also be doing another cooking class on this coming Monday, September 24th. I'll be making butternut squash chicken soup if you're interested and want to learn how to make it. Tasty and nutritious. Also, I thought this was really interesting, they're sponsoring Mummies and More: Intro to Ancient Egypt at the library on October 25th. They actually have a Harvard professor educator, professional educator, Marissa Horowitz-Jaff, who will offer you an introduction to art and archaeology of ancient Egypt. It's an interactive workshop. I mean, these are things that, to me, are priceless. This is free, and it just really exposes children to different cultures. So I encourage people to go out. Please check out the website for the library. If you are interested in looking for different things to do for the kids, there's a lot to offer, and also for adults and teens. Oh, and remember movie nights on Wednesday, well, movie afternoons on Wednesdays at 1:00. And that's it for me.
Excellent, thank you. Trustee Danny White.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, first, I'd like to congratulate the Tuckahoe Police Department and the PBA on another wonderful event. You know, just like the chief said earlier. Even more so, we'd like to congratulate Sheila Markart, the evening's honorary. What was very nice was when Councilman Glenn Belido made mention of the sacrifice the Markart family has made while Sheila is busy serving us. So special thanks to them, thank you very much. Also, the Tuckahoe Road Race. Last Sunday, I had the honor of presenting the awards at this year's Tuckahoe Road Race. I just want to say congratulations to Renee, Johnny, Claire, and Jeff, and a host of others, including the Raffiani family, for their continued support. Some 170 runners took part in two very well orchestrated races. What was very nice to see was the large number of young people crossing the finish line alongside their parents. What was even more encouraging was watching the older age groups give them, older age groups give them a run for their money. Yeah. I myself, not being a runner, I was unaware of the camaraderie, respect, and admiration this running community has for one another. It didn't take long to realize this wasn't just a race day. This was a true family bonding experience, as well as a community bonding experience that we could all benefit from. Great job, it really was outstanding. This evening, like trustee Giordano mentioned, this evening myself and Councilman Marcoccia hosted a small golf outing to benefit the AC Jeffries here in town, the VFW post. And I just wanted to thank those folks that came out to support this worthy cause, thank you so much. Quickly, I wanted to make mention of our Oktoberfest Trolley Crawl on October 13th at 5:00 PM. It's usually a lot of fun. The VFW will also be the beneficiary of this event. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be done down there, and I'm going to make sure it gets done. And, you know, this is how it starts, so. That's that. And on a sad note, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of VFW member and World War II hero with too many medals to mention, Mr. Booker Morris. I had the privilege of attending his services and learning about this wonderful man. His love and devotion for his country will serve as inspiration to all of us. Unfortunately, we not only lost Mr. Morris, but we recently, we recently had a few longtime, we recently lost a few longtime residents as well that made their mark here in Tuckahoe. Mr. Artie Allen, Mr. Jimmy Roberson, and Mr. Nick Zanzano Sr. Our hearts go out to their families, so sorry. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Boy, it's definitely a busy, busy October 13th, I can see that. I just have a couple items. Since we didn't meet, we haven't met in two months now, I didn't get to give my speech about, please be very, very careful when you're driving around school bus stops. I know the Eastchester School District are having some challenges with their school bus stops, and the drivers are having a little bit of challenge trying to adhere to the schedule, so there are kids who are spending a little bit more time at the stops. I see that actually on my street, so just be patient. I see some people just don't seem to have patience today when they're approaching a school bus, and they're blowing the horn, and they're trying to skirt around the bus, so, you know what, they're kids. And that's, you know, our jewels in our community, so please just be very, very cautious around these school bus stops. I mentioned earlier, we're, have our attorney, Chris Harold, he's been working with myself and David Burke. We're negotiating with our Teamsters, DPW Teamsters, so we've had a couple of meetings, we have another one this week, so those negotiations are ongoing, they're going quite well, I'll say. I also want to say I was not able to make it to the road race this year first time, and I can't remember how long, so thank you, Danny.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah. You know what, there was a whole new program there. Renee, she got a new timer in there, I saw the videos of it, just really looked like the New York City Marathon, it was great. So I know, Almira, you put some work into getting this up and running too, so, so thank you. It was a team effort, Renee did a wonderful job, and I know Claire and Jeff, they're always there. I saw Sue Chamarra, I think they're also during, doing the registration, so thank you all very much. You make it a really good community. 'Tis the season for ribbon cuttings. I was at a ribbon cutting, I did one at the Tuckahoe Station Cafe this past Saturday. We're going to have an anniversary ribbon cutting tomorrow at the Koala Daycare Center, which is on Lake Avenue. So we have some new businesses in Tocco, so Tocco is thriving.
All of the time?
And that is at 6:00, I believe, tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, 6:00 tomorrow. I don't have the exact address, I apologize. Yes, yes, so.
Five, I think it's five.
Five?
I believe.
Lake, okay.
It's Armavilla.
Oh, Armavilla, I'm sorry, yeah, I get, okay. And yeah, there's a couple have mentioned, and Tom mentioned, since our last meeting, we received notification that Mr. Joe Marinella passed away. Mr. Marinella, he was a lifelong resident of Tocco. Most people who've watched any of our meetings over the last 20 years, you've seen him here and there. He had a long career with the Journal Newspaper, and he also served as a Tuckahoe Police Commissioner for many years. I'm not sure how many, but I know he was. So, you know, you have to give him credit, he had an awful lot of passion for our village, and his voice is certainly going to be missed. So at the end of our meeting tonight, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence in his honor. And I'll also just want to say too about the pocket park, great job. You know, as many have mentioned it, and I actually had a friend of mine who lives in Eastchester, takes the train, the Crestwood train, and he reached out to me and he said, "Steve, you know what?" He said, "I was getting kind of nervous in the very beginning of the summer that it was going to be a grassy strip," he said, "and I was saying to myself, 'That's crazy,'" he said, "because people would have walked through that, and it would have been a mudhole." So he said, "Great job putting in the pavers there, it looks wonderful." So I know that Sandy Ray Square, she also contributed a lot for the landscape design. Artie the Mason, everyone hears this guy, Artie the Mason, he works for Frank's DPW team. They did a wonderful job down there, so I know there's a little bit more work in it, but it came out great. So with that, that's going to bring us to our second opportunity to address the board on anything at all tonight. Yes? Jerry, are you happy that bridge is down?
Well, that's one of the things I want to talk about.
Okay.
But first of all, I'd like to congratulate Sheila on her award. She's well-deserving of it, and it was a long time coming. Oh, yes, I'm much pleased that the bridge is coming, came down. But I'd like to know, what was the cost to the village of having that bridge taken down?
We, the total, well, MTA did the work, it was $200,000, I think? It tops out at 200. Hopefully, we're going to get a little money back on it. So, yeah, no more than $200,000.
Well, that bridge should have came down, they, they was condemned, and possibly it would have been cost much, much less than it did now.
Believe it or not, it was a lot more at that time. We actually did research.
A lot more than?
It was, but trust me, yeah. When Metro North stepped up and they said they would help in this process, we would have paid Metro North $200,000 just for their flagmen out there, I think, so we're very happy that they, they said that they would do it.
What is the purpose of the train whistle? It seems to be getting louder and louder, and I've been hearing it at 1, 2, 5, and 6 o'clock in the morning. And normally, and it's from station to station lately. Now, can't something be done about that?
I'm going to let our train whistle expert over here talk about that. Oh, boy. It's a pet peeve of Tom's, so I just, I just made his night, I'm sure.
I can wait till you're finished, or I could comment now, it's up to you.
Well, I'm going to be a while, want to comment now?
Sure. So we have actually reached out to Metro North on several occasions for that same reason, feeling that sometimes the horns seem inconsistent, sometimes they seem like they're being leaned on, sometimes they seem worse than others. And really, what Metro North has said is that it's because especially Crestwood Station has the, you know, every train that comes through there is going to be adjacent to a platform area, that in the interest of safety, they need to toot their horn because, just to alert people, to make sure that they're, you know, if they're not paying attention, to know that it's coming, so that nobody gets hurt. You know, the, at one point, it was suggested that they may have been looking and improving the station to create warning sounds, such as the ones that you hear on some of the crossing signals, where you hear like a noise that would help people who may be visually impaired to know when they can cross. But to my knowledge, that was not part of the, you know, that was not part of the RFP for the improvements that may be coming up to Crestwood. So have not really achieved any success in stopping that. And it's hard to argue in the face of safety when they say that this is something that...
Well, if it's a safety factor, then I'm for it, definitely.
Well, the issue is, is there a way to do it, maintain the safety, and not have the loud noise that you can hear from a quarter of a mile away? So, and then I guess that becomes a cost issue.
Thank you. We have to stop the zoning board and the architECT review board for applying permits for new buildings in Tuckahoe. We can't compete with Newark, Yonkers, White Plains, or Mount Vernon. We have nothing to offer them. As the other towns, they have many stores and many restaurants. You look at, you come out of the new hotel when it's done, what are you going to see? You're going to see gasoline alley, you're going to see auto shops and storage buildings. Tuckahoe does not have the foot traffic to warrant all these stores that are being built on the, all these new buildings. Now, you take the new building on Midland Place and Winter Hill Road. You look out there and all you see is empty stores. You see the new condos that went up on Main Street? You look out there and what you see is empty stores. And also, I can never understand why this had ever happened. You see an empty lot there with a plywood wall painted. Now, how could that get, they get away with that? Where was the Yonkers-Tuck review board in that? What the village should have done is buy that property and put up a parking garage for all the businesses and all the new houses and condos that were built on Main Street. I don't know if they ever thought about that. Another problem in Tuckahoe, and I'm sure everybody realizes it, is the traffic problem, believe me. It's getting worse and worse, especially with all these new buildings going up, especially on Main Street, Fisher Avenue, and now Lincoln Avenue. People have taken Lincoln Avenue to avoid the traffic on Main Street and Fisher. I know I have. But now, Lincoln Avenue is getting to be just as bad as Fisher and also Main Street. I will say, and I will commend whoever stopped taking that traffic light down on Fisher and Marbledale. It would have been a disaster, because put full stops there would have been no good with all the traffic coming from the new hotel and all the traffic that's there now, plus the fact of the playground that was there. Where you need a traffic light, I personally feel, is at Lincoln and Marbledale. The stop signs there do not do any good at all, believe me. I've seen it. Also, has the village ever considered eliminating the two parking spaces on the bridge? Because cars, and especially trucks, trailers, and buses making the right-hand turn have to go wide to make that right-hand turn, and then have to get back into the right-hand lane to go up to Main Street. I think it would help the traffic flow. I'm not a traffic advisor, but I see that almost every day, because I live in the consulate, and I have to go that way to when I go to the stores and everything. You spoke about the buses, well, is it possible to have one or two bus stops along Main Street and Fisher, instead of having the bus stop at every corner? And I've seen the bus stop in the middle of the block to let kids off. That slows up traffic, believe me. And I've been in a traffic jam a lot of times, that's why I take Lincoln now. Because Main Street is a disaster, especially in the morning, not only with the traffic for the train, but also the school kids. I do have to comment and congratulate the DPW Department, Frank Damago, Damaco, and his crew. The past few years, they've done an excellent job as far as snow removal, street cleaning, and with the leaves and everything. But I'm really impressed about the decorations that they do around Christmas time, the different trees and the different parks in the village, and also on the bridges and the bridge and everything, and the lampposts, especially in the springtime when they plant the flowers and everything. It does make Tocco a beautiful village. I moved in Tocco twenty years ago with a quaint little hamlet of a village, now it's going to be like a metropolis, and it's getting out of hand, the traffic especially, believe me. I'm sure the police commi- chief knows about that. I know they can't be every place, but what happened to the motorcycles? Didn't Tocco have motorcycles for the cops?
We still do.
Do you still have them?
Oh, yes.
But I haven't seen them around. I mean, they're very good for, for traffic and for emergencies, especially if the emergency vehicle can't get through. I haven't seen them for, for years in around the village. And, and, and I said before, they are more maneuverable than cars. I like to see them more often. And also, uh, I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Damaco in his presentation on his videos that, that were shown on the TV not too long ago, of the, uh, video of the DPW garage showing all the equipment, and how they operate and how they maintain it and everything, and I was great, uh, uh, I really was, uh, appreciative of what they did for the, the salt. They built the salt shed to, to contain the salt for when and during the wintertime, so that they, they don't, they don't lose it. And, and also, I want this village residents, especially the seniors, to know the different projects that he has undertaken, it was on video, and want them to realize what the savings he has done for the village in main, in building all these different projects, especially this latest park on, in Crestwood, to hire an outside contractor, I think would have cost probably double, if not even more. Uh, what's going on with the, uh, the property across the street from the old Revlon building? I see, uh, heavy equipment there and everything. Do you know what's going on there?
That's the, um, where the old gas station?
Yes, where the old gas station was.
They, uh, I saw they moved that piece of equipment out there. Gary, did they, have they been issued a permit to start construction?
They have.
Okay.
They were through the planning zoning about a year and a half ago, um, and I believe he filed for the premises to start, it's, um...
It's like a two-story building, I think, that's going up there?
It's going to be parking, if I remember correctly, there's parking underneath, and there's, uh, an office above, like a medical office or regular office, um, but that's, that's going ahead.
It's going to be a two-story building there?
Well, it's parking underneath, I think there's, so it's going to look like two stories, but there's parking on the first floor, and then above that...
Yeah, I'm guessing when I say two stories, don't take my word for it, I'm not...
Yeah, I just don't recall, it's been a while since they were before the boards, but that was approved a while ago.
That means more traffic, too.
It was a small building.
It was tiny, yeah. I, I, I think there, there's not going to be much traffic impact from that building.
One of my other concerns is, when you give these builders a break on the assessment of taxes, I don't think that's going to help the village at all. I think the village's taxes are going to go up, because with all these new buildings, you're going to need more policemen, you're going to need more firemen, you're going to need more people working in the town hall. In fact, I feel that you might even have to have a new school, or maybe even a new firehouse built, because the population in Tocco is getting really out of hand. I don't think we can, the streets are going to take this, believe me. Coming up, coming up shortly is the, uh, annual carnival at Lake Isle. It's going to be held on, uh, October fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and it's going to benefit the, uh, Eastchester seniors. So, I wish everybody would come out, it's been a great event, every year that we've had it there. In fact, I think it's, what it's going to do is going to benefit the new, uh, Eastchester Community Center that's going to be being built. They started already, they broke ground and everything for it, and, and I've been fighting for that for years, just like I've been fighting for the bridge. So, uh, they say things come to those who wait, but I've been waiting a long time, and, and I'm hoping I'm still around when these things come to pass, because next year I'll be eighty-eight.
God bless you, Jerry.
Thank you. Also, I want to tell Mr. Damaco, whenever his crew see me come by in my, uh, white Audi, I'm giving him not the finger, I'm giving them a thumbs up for a job that's well done and well deserved. Thank you.
That's a goo- it's a good note to leave, huh? Jerry, thank you. Yes, Mr. Laurie. If you can top that, you're up next, Mr. Laurie.
Anthony Laurie, Wallace Street in Tocco. First, I want to congratulate Joe Tavalila and Jimmy Guzzo, and it's nice to hear when they say they come from Tocco, there's very few of us left that were born here in Tocco. First, I want to speak as a fire commissioner. I do want to agree with Mr. Damaco that they're doing the leaves, please, and I beg the people, please, don't pile it in front of the fire hydrants, keep it away from the fire hydrants. The other day, in fact, last Thursday, I was coming down Chestnut Street, and on the corner of Chestnut, at the corner of Coolidge and Chestnut, there's a fire hydrant there, and a man, I guess he was throwing it out, put a treadmill, leaned it right against the fire hydrant. Now, you only know what it takes, God forbid if you have a fire in your neighborhood, it takes that much more time, if the fire's on and the firemen have to come and move that thing before they could hook up to the engines. You can't believe, Mayor, if you go around this community, when the people put their trash out, or their leaves, or their branches out, they won't put it on the curb, right against the fire hydrant. And someday, we're going to have a real serious, serious accident going to happen, when, it, that's just the delay of time for the, for the men to hook up. So, I ask the, the citizens of this community, don't put near the, near the fire hydrants, please, it's, it's only for your own safety, but to put a, a treadmill right against that is idiotic.
Can I ask you a question, because you, you're a commissioner on the Eastchester Fire Board? The fire hydrant is owned by, uh, the district, or by?
The water company, we rent them.
Okay, right, that's what I thought. So, you could not go out and issue a violation to somebody who did that?
No.
Your entity, okay.
But if you see the person, even if you advise them...
Right.
The smart answer they get, don't worry, nothing's going to happen.
Yeah, no, I, I know that.
You know? But anyway, aside from that, as, as a regular citizen of this community, I live on Wallace Street, and there's, in the past, I'd say, year, there's been a lot of dogs in the community, okay? Last week, I went and cleaned it up, someone parked their dog right on the Korean Vietnam Monument. It's disgusting, and that little area of grass in there that says, there's a sign there, it says, keep off grass, well, that's where the, everybody parks their dogs, okay? I was walking with my grandson today in the carriage, right in front of the sign that says Circuit Avenue Park, it's still there, I just saw it this morning about eleven-thirty. Yesterday morning, I came out of my house, going to church, right in the center of my path coming out, I had to step over, there was a nice big cream puff there. You, you know, I know some people do pick it up, I'm not blaming everybody, I know some people do pick it up, but it's only courtesy. I mean, I hate like heck to see a lady in a high heel get out of their car, and they step in that cream puff. And another thing, on the Vietnam-Korean Monument, last Thursday, after I had cleaned that up on the monument, later that afternoon, the gardener at fifty Columbus Avenue blew all his grass clippings, leaves, put it right there, and I cleaned that up also. This Friday, when I had a few minutes, when I was waiting in front of the library with the trolley, I got out, I asked the gardener over there, please, don't blow that over there, don't put it over there, pick it up, that's a monument. If people don't know it, a monument is sacred grounds, whether it be a Boy Scout monument, fireman's monument, veterans monument, those are sacred grounds. I'm sure you wouldn't want, no one to trash your relative's grave out in a cemetery. Let's have a little common courtesy, I'm not against dogs, please, I'm, tomorrow, everybody's going to say that loudmouth was in there yelling about dogs, I'm not talking about that, just pick up after you. I mean, uh, I came out of my house, like I said yesterday, and there it was, perfect spot, right in there, on a Sunday morning. So, please, I know there's a leave, there's an ordinance with blowers, but it, it does help the blow, I understand, I, one time, was told by a police officer that the ordinance is in until the end of, uh, September, but the gardener seemed to blow everything on that monument. You know, we did have the bus stop moved, it was on there a few years ago, and we did have it moved, because after the bus picked the children up, there was everything there, lollipops, gum wrappers, juice containers, thank God, the bus stop was moved, and nothing was there anymore, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to, uh, address the board?
One other thing, um, September thirtieth is Gold Star Mother's Day.
Oh, that's right.
And the ceremony this year is going to be up on Route twenty-two and California Road at the monument over there, it's ten o'clock on that Sunday morning. And also, that same day, at three-thirty, they're honoring all those that were Gold Star Mothers, and those that were killed in Iraq and Afghanistan at, at the Kinsco Dam.
Oh, it's at the Kinsco Dam?
That, and at three-thirty.
Okay.
The ten o'clock one is in the...
Right, right.
California Road.
Yeah, no, I thought, I thought the other one was up at the cemetery for some reason, I didn't know...
No, that's, that's the, um, Medal of Honor one.
Medal of Honor, okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay.
Just a couple of quick things, um, Danny, let's make sure that we get a booth recap for the Halloween thing, we'll make sure we get a table for them, we talked about that, so they're there, because they, you know, we, they weren't the last one for the, you know, the summer thing. Also, on Ecap, we did the tour, Frank, thank you for helping out with that tour, we did the tour, I have, uh, pictures David for you, um, we took some kids from Ecap, and we did a tour of DPW, it was great, although they couldn't handle the heat, so, air conditioning's made them weak! And then, uh, I'd like to also, I talked to a few people, and they're willing to donate money to put together, uh, to pay for a tree in honor of Joe, and I briefly talked to Frank about it, so we could figure that out, you know, where it would go, what the cost would be, we would gladly donate money to plant a tree in Joe's honor, since he was a big, you know, a big plant person. His sons are, are managing his, his vegetables and stuff now. And, um, and finally, I think it would make sense, and it's, I, I know we've been doing it, um, on the Tocco United site, I would like to see the Democrats do it and the Republicans do it, we've been promoting the events that the Chamber's doing on the Tocco United site, tagging, um, I do it, I, since I do the social, I've been tagging, I've been tagging media, I've been tagging other groups, I think it would make sense for, um, your, your pages that you have, Instagram, or Facebook especially, and promote, I just take, take the images and just put it on there, basically copy what they wrote, and then I tag people, different groups, Dems, Republicans, uh, people I know, uh, you know, Peter, George Latimer, whatever, Damon Mayer, and then also, I will also put on News Twelve Low HUD, and I'll tag media, and because that'll alert them that, that's happening, so I just think that that would be a nice gesture, uh, that, I know most of those times, those things are used for political purposes, but I think it'd be great to use them to promote, uh, what the Chamber does as a non-partisan thing, so...
Thank you. Yes, Jerry, you got the final word, okay?
I, I just want to mention one thing, uh, I've been noticing around Tocco, people have been putting out their garbage and recycling items long before they're being picked up, especially on a weekend, and when there's a holiday. Now, that stuff stays there for almost three or four days, if not longer. Now, I'm sure a homeowner must realize that's in front of his house, or on the side of his house, doesn't he think, taking consideration what his house looks like, if all that stuff is there? In fact, I've seen mattresses and everything on the curb, and been there for a couple of days. Now, isn't there a, a schedule for, for recycling to be put out and stuff like that?
There is, we actually do send, well, we put it on our website, of course, we, uh...
And isn't there a, uh, I don't know, I think Eastchester has a code enforcement officer or something, that can't they go around and, and make, maybe, first time warn these people and they'll, before they give them a summons?
They actually do, uh, maybe Frank wants to talk about it, I know they'll put a sticker on it if it's out at the wrong, inappropriate time, so, um, there is a process for that, yes.
And it seems that it's the same people all the time.
Jerry, what I think it is, because it's true on my block, it's the renters of those homes, and they're not familiar with, uh, you know, when these, when the garbage is supposed to be put out properly, on, on what day. And I'm a big advocate, you hit them once with a fine, I bet you they don't do it again, just like the leaf blowers. It's, I, you're absolutely right, I had, I had two metal cabinets, uh, out in front of, uh, my house for about a week. And I know what the, I know what the homeowner's intention was, he was hoping that some metal collector would come by and, and probably pick up that metal, but they didn't, so I had to give Frank a call, and, uh, in the meantime, his, his staff had contacted that homeowner, and he pulled that material off the, um, off the curb, but...
It's making me look bad. It was about four or five... Is it green?
You're on.
There you go.
Uh, yeah, I took that path every morning, so I knew it was there. It actually looked like wood, but it was really metal, so I got out and looked at it, so we picked it up as soon as we can. Actually, we didn't, we, we put warning labels on it, like we normally do.
Yes, you did, yep.
Jerry, we put warning labels on it, we can't give them any summonses until, um, they're warned, and once they're warned and they don't bring it in within a day, you know, I will summons them, the court will give them a fine. But we do, we diligently, on a Thursday, Friday, drive around the village to make sure there's nothing left out for the weekend, and, and you know, in the weekend, everybody starts moving out, um, tenants are moving out, they're unloading everything in their apartments, and we obviously don't see that, because we're not around on a, on a Saturday or Sunday, but believe it or not, I do get calls, after making speeches like this on our board meetings, uh, people are calling me on weekends, uh, but I don't mind that, I really don't, and, uh, yes, I, I need to know who's doing that, I need to know who, who's causing these offenses, and we want to stop that, we don't want our, our village looking like garbage on weekends, and I highly promote that on a Thursday and Friday, and I could always use assistance, so if you see anything out there that I'm missing, or we're missing, uh, please just let me know.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. All right, so, uh, with there being no other business tonight, uh, I will make the motion to adjourn this meeting, and do I have a second on that?
I second.
And before we adjourn, I would just like everyone to stand for a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Joe Marinella. Thank you, rest in peace. Till next time, Tocco, everyone have a wonderful evening.